You can see it on Comcast Channel 22 or Verizon Channel 33. The videographer for tonight's meeting is Rob. Check rctv.org for more information and for replay times. All right. The first matter on our agenda. Brad, do you have both applicants tonight?
I do.
Okay. I saw Josh was on the special permit, so I didn't know if you were going to make him work overtime. I didn't know if you were going to make him work overtime. All right, so the first case on the agenda is Case 1802. The Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the Selectance Meeting Room at Town Hall 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts. On Wednesday, February 21st, 2018, at 7:00 PM, on the applicant of Attorney Josh Latham on behalf of Vincent and Kimberly Shanley pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 9, for a special permit under Reading's Zoning Bylaw, Section 532 and 547, to construct in addition to the existing single-family dwelling and to create an attached accessory apartment on the property located at 32 Whitehall Lane in Reading, Massachusetts. I will dispense with the reading of the abutters list, except to say that the abutters were notified, as were the appropriate boards and committees and commissions and departments and daytime government, members and associate members of the ZBA, as well as the related planning boards of the surrounding communities. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath, so if you think you may want to speak on this case, please stand and raise your right hand. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, responses I do.
I do.
Attorney Latham, the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Brad Latham. For the record, here on behalf of Vincent and Kim Shanley, they apologize for not being here themselves, it's a lot of mistake. This relates to 32 Whitehall Lane. The Shanleys have owned the property for over 10 years. They seek to put a small addition on the back of the property and a single-car garage next to it, as affixed to the dwelling, to create an accessory apartment. This would be for Vincent's parents. The parents lived in Reading for a few years, and they went to Florida. The father had a heart condition and wants to get back and be able to be with his family, and so therefore they'd like to have this addition made so that they could, the parents could live with them in the property. The addition is unobtrusive. The property is in an S-15 district. The lot is about 5,000 square feet of volume that is required in that district. I'd like, if I could, walk through the elements that are required for the special permit. The first requirement is that the plan must show the proposed interior/exterior changes, and the plans are submitted with the package. Hopefully we'll do that to your satisfaction. Next is that the accessory apartment, the gross floor area, not exceed the lesser of 1,000 square feet, or one-third of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling. The calculation is listed on the plan submitted, but basically the current gross area is 2,979 square feet. One-third of that is 993 square feet. The proposed addition is 991 square feet, so it falls within the limit as required by that section. At least one of the owners of the lot continuing the principal single-family dwelling and accessory apartment shall reside in either the accessory apartment or the principal dwelling. Vincent and his wife, Kim, are going to be here to reside in the home. They own the property, will continue to do so. Any modification, there must have the appearance of a single-family dwelling. As you can see from the front of the property, the entranceways stay the same. There's nothing really being added there that would make it appear to be other than a single-family dwelling. The entrance to the accessory apartment is off the sides behind the main building, behind the garage. The building inspector required there to be two of those, and there's one on each side, east and west of each side. Thank you. This is Peter San Dorsy, who's the architect. When I get through, he's going to ask me to explain these drawings, if you would. All stairways to the primary entrance to an accessory apartment located on the second and third floors shall be enclosed. There are no entrances. They're all first-floor entrances to this property. Where two or more entrances already exist on the front of the facade, you cannot add a third one. Well, there's no third entrance being entered, as they say, they're on the side and behind the building. All motor vehicles owned and maintained must be in a driveway or garage. The proposals to have a single-car garage, which is an extension of the current garage, they only have one car. The driveway itself still has the same opening that exists on the street, so that's not changing either. Both the principal and single-family dwelling and accessories shall connect to the public water and sanitary sewer system, which they do and will continue to do. Jumping now, the other section doesn't relate to this, that goes with a freestanding additional building. However, general lot coverage, the zoning bylaw allows 25% of the lot to be covered. This proposal only has 13.22% covered. It means all setback requirements. Going to the general accessory building section, it says accessory building should not be permitted with a required front yard. This is not a required front yard. So that, what I read are the requirements for a special permit, and Peter, I wonder if you might put up and explain the changes being proposed. Right, while he puts that up, I'd like if I could read highlights from a letter from Vincent Senior to the board requesting your permission. He cites simply that he's lived in town for a number of years. When he had a heart operation, he now is rethinking his living conditions, wants to be closer to his family, and after conversations with the son and daughter law, they've invited him to join them, and the addition relates to that, and he requests you a favorable action on the applicant.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Peter, if you could, let's try to explain the changes.
You might want that for the file.
You want trades?
Yeah, to do trade.
This is what you, I'll have in front of you, but what we tried to do is do an addition that matches the feel of the existing house, which is a center and its colonial. It currently has a connecting breezeway. We're also using that space above. On the second floor here, we're sharing it. Some of the space is given to the main house in form of a master bathroom and a lock-in closet, and then the area over the garage becomes the in-law. So as Brad has said, you come in this, this is their parking bay in the garage. They walk down a walkway. If I can switch the plane. That's our square footage calculations, which were requested by the document. But they come down a walkway, there's a little covered porch for their side entry, a small lab. They can also enter from the garage. They walk into the living dining area, a small kitchenette, a set of stairs that goes up to their sleeping area above, which is here, and comprises the bathroom, a sleeping area, and a closet. The call of the connector area, which is, belongs to any residence, and it is a lock-in closet, laundry, a bathroom, shower situation, connects to the master bedroom. They also wanted it so the family could use as an additional door there for the family. But this represents the in-law over the garage area. Tried to keep the roof lines very similar to what's there, and so it looks like it could have always been in-law.
Was the second doorway, the breezeway, is that there? I went by the house a couple of times.
Yes, it's there.
In the picture, we're on the accessory.
So it comes into a, to a small den on the first floor, and it stays that way. We've proposed, initially actually, we proposed them having a connection inside. The building inspector suggested we move it, which we did, but this also gives a match. So as far as that goes, no change to the front of the house at all in that area, just an addition to the bay.
Right.
And then, in, back elevation, this, the living area of the in-law is, or the accessory apartment, is one-story. It's the bed, in the bathroom, that are on the block. That's just what this would be initially. The shed office that allow us to get the headroom and then the little shed. Yeah, the coop just, give a little drama in there.
Do you want to go over your calculations on your?
Sure. So in the existing house, we are able to use the finished section of the walkout basement, which comprises 578 square feet. That is actually the finished, which we're showing. So you come down the existing stairs, and this area is finished. This is actually full glass, you know, walks up to the backyard. So that's the area that we took for the basement, not the utility part, it's not the unfinished part. Then on the first floor, we're showing all of the space that is now the colonial, the den, and the breezeway, this connector out to the den, and that gives us 1,215 square Second floor is all of the existing colonial and what we're creating for the new master bathroom, and that gives us 1,108 six square feet, which gives us 2,979 square feet, and we're allowed to build up to 1,000 square feet, or 25%, I believe, whichever is lower. And when we do our calculation for the proposed accessory apartment for a floor is 525 square feet, which is this area. And then you go up to the area above the garage, which is this area, and that comprises a additional 466 square feet, giving us 991 square feet.
The first floor, go back to first floor. First floor, 525 square feet.
Yep.
Includes the bathroom, it doesn't include that, is that an open deck or something?
This, this is an open porch.
Which is not included.
Not included because it, by reading the requirements, is open space outside, not finished, not enclosed.
Does it have a deck, does it have a roof over it?
It does have a roof over it.
Is that from the dormer, more or less over the roof line itself, from the back?
So this low roof line, which is coming along, which is a hip roof, just completes the corner and goes over that entry porch. So that's all one-story roofing.
Well, the reason I ask that is, we've had difficulty through the years of people starting off with open decks. Open decks became something over the coverage of the deck, and then the walls went up.
Yes.
So now it becomes inclusive in the living space, and that would, to me, that would totally put you way over.
Well, what I think, I would suggest, if we're concerned, is let's just cut it back so it actually just covers the empty door, isn't it? Which, which I think, even in the residential.
The stoops, right. If it's a stoop, it's one thing.
Let's see.
You're talking about.
So it's actually right here. This is the, this is the piece of roof. This is the 10-inch column. This would be the exterior slab. Here's the door and the window.
Right, there's no walls or screening or nothing there, it's just.
No, no, at the present time, no. But I mean, the problem has not necessarily been with the original people who put on open decks. It could be somebody who sells the property down the road once or twice, and then it becomes an issue, so that's why we're just looking at it.
If it gives the board comfort, the addition to, both in course, a condition, a special permit, if you required something to be recorded, or if someone acknowledged that they would not be able to add on without coming back to this point, that would certainly be satisfactory as a public record that way, as well as any other way you want.
Okay. Well, I mean, we're step on the plans.
That's right. And I look at it, we're, we're at a public hearing tonight on plans that are presented to us, and on something that's going to be built this coming year, this coming construction season, not in something that could be built 10 years down the road. I agree with you, John, it's been done, but if that's the case, then the people have to come back that are going to enclose that, I assume. Go to the building department, get a permit, and hopefully at that time, if there is an issue, it would then come back to us. We don't worry about something that's 10 years down the road that could possibly happen.
Well, we can, yeah.
We can talk about it.
We can talk about it.
Yeah.
Typically, we open the session up to any comments or questions. We've already heard a couple from board members, and we typically take those in order. We've gone a little bit out of order, but those were helpful questions to get answered for the general good of the board.
Except from line two here.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to read that into the record too. Yeah, so before we start, we'll start with you, Nick. But before we do, I'm going to read in a memo dated February 20th, 2018, from Glenn Reddman regarding Case 1802, addressed to me, ZBA chairperson. I've reviewed the revised construction plans dated January 24th, 2018, for 32 Whitehall Lane in Reading, Mass, for the proposed addition and the accessory apartment. The proposed addition to the existing single-family is in compliance with Sections 532 and 547 for the purposes of creating an accessory apartment. The final construction plans will conform to the requirements of the state building codes prior to the issuance of the required building permit. I would recommend at this time that the special permit be granted, so I wanted to make that part of the record. Nick, any questions, comments?
I don't have any questions. I thought the plans were pretty complete. The explanation of the finished basement made sense. I guess my only comment would be, and I know we touched on this last time, but the one-third of the principal residence, we're not counting the original residence, we're taking the additions in part in that calculation.
Correct.
All right. I have no comments or other questions.
All right. Robert?
Okay, yeah, I think as Attorney Latham stated, it's an S-15 district, the property. The property is, it sits now, meets all zoning requirements, the lot and the dwelling meets all offsets, and as it's proposed, it's all within the building envelope that's required with offsets from the property lines. And it appeared to me going through on Section 5.4.7, accessory apartment, that the applicant met all the requirements of that, and I don't have an issue with that. One question I did have, and it's in my notes here, and I forget where I read it now, but is Conservation Commission going to be involved with this at all, Brad? Do you know? I thought I read it in one of the statements in here that you would have to go to, oh yeah, Conservation Commission approval is, Conservation approval required. I see that under.
The 132.
January 30th, 2018 from Glenn.
Yeah. Do you know anything on that?
I don't know on hand, but if it's jurisdictional, absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, and to be honest with you, looking at the plans, I didn't see where the wetlands were in the area, but obviously, if that's the case, they may have to do that then. So other than that, I don't have any issues with the problem. I think this is, is fine. You won't be able to see anything from the front of the building at all. The apartment's going to be built at the back. They're putting an addition on to the garage, I assume for the third car there, which would be for the applicant's parents.
That's correct.
On that. But by right, I think they would be allowed to put an extension on their garage anyway, for themselves even if they wanted to. And so, it's about it. I'm satisfied with the application.
All right. Thank you, Robert. John, anything to add to your earlier questions?
No, I spotted the same thing that Robert did on Conservation Approval. I didn't see it when I went by.
No.
But I don't know that, so that would have to be taken care of, Brad said, down the road anyways, before you get the building permit. The rest of the, the rest of the, you know, I can't see where, I can't see where anything on the requirements for the accessory, new accessory apartment has not been covered here. The calculations, I usually like to go over anyways and take a look at. From what is, from what is here, I don't see any, anything that I can question. One part that you mentioned, that Robert mentioned, the third garage, the ratio for units is one and a half to one, so that meets that requirement, even if it weren't that. And they have plenty of space out front to park additional vehicles too. I think the tie-in was, was good, and the fact that you really don't see other than that second door in the front, I don't see anything that would even indicate that that was an accessory apartment. So I mean, in that case, it meets the intended purpose of the bylaw, so I don't have a problem with it.
All right, great. Thank you, John. Si.
I don't really have a problem at all. I think the, the design of the thing, the way you went about doing it, I think was well thought out, and you fit something very nice into this property that does fully comply. This conservation thing, I mean, Glenn put it in there before, and then he did not put it into this memo, so maybe, you know, in his own mind, that's really not an issue. Okay? And if it becomes one, then that's something down the road. The only thing I would caution you on though, is that if someplace down the road, while you own the property, if you want to enclose that porch on the side, you're going to have to come back, and that probably will be a difficult thing to resolve. But at the moment, we're approving something that you've presented tonight. Tonight, you don't have a single problem with it.
Great. Thank you, Si. I have, and maybe it's just a point of clarification, looking at your, at the plot plan you submitted versus the drawing that you just went over, the, I guess, let's call it the proposed square footage of the entire building. You call it existing on here, but that's with the addition. Comes out to 2,979 square feet, whereas, and maybe I'm reading this wrong, on the plan up in the upper left-hand corner, you come up with 2,654 square feet on the plot plan. Am I, is it, where am I, where's the 300 square foot difference? Am I missing that somewhere, or is there a discrepancy?
There's a difference. I don't know why there's a difference.
Okay.
It's intentional to be the architectural drawing.
Okay.
So the engineer, surveyor prepared this, made this ready.
Okay. And you understand that that plan is going to get recorded, presuming we approve this, and it's got the incorrect dimensions on it?
If the board would see its way to have a condition that the, this plan be made to conform to the architectural calculations before being recorded, certainly do that.
Except then I have to stamp that.
I see David, excuse me, for a, they do count the existing shed, existing deck, et cetera, in with the square footage for the whole house.
Right, and then they add the proposed additions, and this, if I'm reading this correctly, the 2,979 is the whole area including the proposed additions, so it's about 300 square foot.
Difference?
Difference.
I didn't go through those numbers.
And so I just want to make sure we're being consistent. Typically, Brad, it's not the board's practice to issue a decision without a plan being sent as part of the application, so you know, I understand from a time management perspective, you know, you typically would like to condition for a plan that conforms to the architectural, you know, the elevation, architectural drawing, but again, I've got to stamp and sign it.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it's, I think we'd have to go through here and maybe do some addition subtraction to check.
Well, I mean.
I think, you know, John Sullivan, typically what he does, that's the.
Well, right, but it's been represented from the applicant that these elevation drawings govern, not the plot plan.
Right.
That the correct representation of the actual square footage is the elevation drawing, and not the plot plan, and where there's a discrepancy, and both of them get stamped, that discrepancy presents.
Right.
An ongoing issue, and an inconsistency that I'm not comfortable with.
If the board wants to, we can continue it, and we could submit a corrected plan for the board before it votes.
I think I would prefer to do it that way. That way we have it all at once, and that's consistent with the board's practice, Brad. You know, it would be very quick, and we'll take a look at the calendar. I mean, we're back in, what, in two weeks anyway? I wouldn't want to, only, I mean, we couldn't put him on at the beginning of that, although I'd have to come in for that, for the, just to sign the decision, and then, and then excuse myself and walk out, but I would, I would do that. I mean, literally, it's, it would take, presumably he comes back with a plan that matches this, it would take less than five minutes to open and close and stamp and approve it. That's what, March 7? Is that okay, Brad? March 7?
Right.
All right. All right, well, before we go any further, I typically would open the, open the hearing up to any public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this application, please raise your hand, wait to be recognized, and if you're going to speak to it, you would rise and identify yourself by name and address, and also be sworn, because Brad was the only one that was sworn in. Not sworn at, sworn in. And anybody like to speak? Sir, you'll need to be sworn in, so.
Well, anybody that wants to speak.
Yeah, anybody else that would like to be heard on this.
If you think you might want to, please stand.
Please stand. Please rise, stand.
It doesn't hurt. And if you don't speak, you don't speak.
All right. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Your responses, I do.
I do, I do.
Thank you. You asked to be recognized first, sir. Please identify yourself by name and address for the.
Paul Serrano, 34 Sherwood Road, I bought in the back of the property. I'm just trying, this is the first time I've seen the plans. I'm trying to wrap my head around, I think going up above the breezeway and the garage, and then adding another garage to the side, and how far back are they going to extend the addition?
So the addition goes back 12 feet from the back of the garage?
12 feet from the back of the garage?
The new part, so all total, well, 14 from what you see now.
So basically, it's going behind the original garage that they have.
That is correct.
That's right. Thank you.
No addition on that. That's all saying, just the way it is now. Thank you, sir.
The certified plot plan indicates that from the edge of the proposed addition to the back, property line is 91 feet.
Well, that may change, based upon their new dimensions. One of the other folks that want to be heard, please. Ma'am, thank you.
I was wondering.
I'm sorry, ma'am, please, your name and address, if you would, please.
Oh, Maria Chilamath, Paul Whitehall Lane.
Thank you so much.
And he runs his own business out of his house, and he has this huge truck that he plows and does everything with, garden work, and he leaves it out on the driveway. he plows and does everything with, garden work. And he leaves it out on the driveway. And sometimes out in the street. You know, uh, why would she have to have an extra garage if he would, uh, I didn't know they were really allowed to leave it there. Cause there's people around the corner and they have to, they were told they couldn't leave any of their equipment in the yard.
Uh, you mentioned it's a, it's a, what is it, a pickup truck with a plow on it?
A what?
You said they, they leave a, a plow in the drive, parked in the driveway?
Uh, the, one of those grain and trucks, like the town would drive.
Okay.
To plow. And they plow the streets and through people and stuff and do yard work. And they leave it in the front in their driveway. Which I, I thought was illegal, but, you know, maybe it's changed by now. But, uh, they wouldn't have to put up an extra, uh, garage. And, and since they run their business out of there, maybe, uh, they can run it some place else.
Thank you. Uh, sir, did you have something to add?
Bill, guys, it's 17T White Hall.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't hear, but I may have said it, but was there a kitchen facility with this addition?
It's a small, very small. There's one room, one living. Uh, there's a stairway that goes up underneath that area. There's a run of cabinetry that has a sink and dishwasher, and a small stove, and a small refrigerator, under counter, I think.
So is, is, you know, governance for this not to become a two-family residence? Uh, this is just an accessory?
It's a matter of semantics, sir.
On a special purpose?
The, the portion of the zoning bylaw that they're seeking relief under allows property owners that meet the performance standards that the applicant went through to add in a separate living space, complete with a kitchen, that meets those dimensional requirements that they were talking about, certain square footage. Um, so it needs to maintain the appearance of a single-family house, but there are two dwelling units in that house for the purpose of having an access, an accessory apartment. And that's what the bylaw has set out to, to allow homeowners to do.
So if it looks correct, it's okay?
If it looks correct and it measures correct, and it meets all the building code standards and the building inspector's, uh, needs, uh, and meets the bylaw section that, that we've just outlined, um, then they would be entitled to the relief that they seek.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
In relation to what this gentleman was just saying, so if the families in the future sell this house to someone, could they rent out the addition as a separate apartment? Is that something that could possibly happen with the new addition? And, you know, the neighborhood, if you're familiar with it, which I'm sure you are, is all single-family homes. Um, how, is there any bylaw that we already has that would prevent that or?
Well, it's, it has to be, there is, once a, a special permit for an accessory apartment is granted, the only requirement is that the owner of the house has to live in one of the two units. In this case, they're proposing that a family member reside in a typical in-law apartment situation. But your question is well taken in that there is, there is no control in the bylaw for what that homeowner, whoever that homeowner may be, now or in the future, does with that accessory apartment, whether they house a family member there or someone other than a family member there. There is no, uh, control in the bylaw for that.
Okay. I'm sorry. Uh, so my next question to follow that up would be, um, could, are you gonna open up a key in the room where anybody can, as long as it looks like a single-family home, add an addition and then rent it out to someone, even though they're not a family member? Is that what's gonna happen down the road? Or how do we prevent that? Because I'm sure everyone knows, we have a really gorgeous neighborhood and, you know, I hate to have all these families turn into two-family homes and it would be a mess.
Your, your point is again well taken. Uh, when the zoning bylaw was amended, uh, several years ago to, uh, add in, uh, some streamlining, if you will, of the, the accessory apartment section of the bylaw, uh, we did discuss your specific concern. And won't this now result in a proliferation of people coming forward and wanting to do this? Well, there are two sides to that. The population is growing and the generational, uh, need for accessory apartments is growing such that we would want to foster a community where families are encouraged to allow aging family members or parents or children to move in with them and provide an accommodation for them. On the flip side to that, you're absolutely right. We want to, uh, count and track how many of these applications come forward so that we don't, well, so that we notice whether or not this happens with increasing regularity. Uh, I can tell you in the past year and over, probably year and a half that I've been chairman, uh, we've had, I think, three, two or three, this might be the third or fourth, application for an in-law apartment in a year. And we don't, I don't necessarily think that would be considered a unreasonable number of, of requests for an in-law apartment. But, um, the town does and will track the number of, of accessory apartment applications that come in, because there are, there is a process whereby somebody doesn't even need to come before this board. If they have the existing space in an existing and building envelope, and they meet those dimensional requirements, they can go and get a, a permit at the counter without having to come to ZBA. So I'm sure the town is keeping track of the number of these applications. And, uh, the concern is well taken that it, quote unquote, not get out of hand.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry. So, among us certainly against in-law apartments, it would be turning that, a single-family house into a two-family house where the owner is renting it to a non-family member? Is that something that could happen down the road with this?
Yes.
Possible?
Yes.
Okay. So, I just wanted to get that on the record, that that is something that could possibly happen, should they sell their property and someone else buys and rents it to someone who's totally not a family member?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, there are some safeguards built into this. Because it's an accessory apartment, you did hear under the requirements, it can occupy no more than one-third of the total, um, square footage of the, of the.
Principal residence.
Principal residence. And consequently, uh, it has to meet all of the requirements as if it were a two-family structure. Two means of egress, um, which is the biggest thing. Um, there's a lot of building code that comes into this. Um, because it's over garage, it needs to meet, meet special requirements for the safety of the people who are living above it. There are a lot of safeguards built into this. The only one that's intangible is that if you were, wanted to do this in your, in your particular home, you could do that if you meet all of the, I think there's eight or nine requirements that you have to meet. The only thing that we, that can't be brought into this is who can you rent, who can you lease, who can you give the accessory apartment to? If, if, if I were living in a big house, I may wanna take the accessory apartment for myself and let my children live in the rest of the house or rent it out to somebody else. There's no way to control that. Just the fact that it is basically a two-family, but it's really not a two-family in its size. So it's not four and four or five and five. Uh, it's really like three and six. It's only one-third.
Could only be two bedrooms.
And it, you, really, it's a, you can only have two bedrooms in this accessory apartment. I mean, there's a lot of safeguards here. The town was interested in the changing population. Unfortunately, we're getting older. At least I am. Uh, and things change. Your children, this generation of children usually come back and live with their parents when something goes wrong or they try to get a head start or whatever. We had no way of doing that for separation of the, of the two kind of family units. So this was intended to do that. Also, it brings us up on affordable housing aspects of it, uh, which we are always facing, which is what you do 40Bs for.
Hell, housing in general. Going to need for more housing.
Right.
Just one point of clarification for me. This is, I, I think as long as a single-family residential neighborhood, is there something that, at Fort Bona in the zoning that then says, and by the way, therefore you can't have a commercial enterprise within that area? And I can see the altruistic, you know, addition. How do you have to screen your kids? I want some apartment that's, you know, great stuff. It's all wonderful and Christian, so to speak. Or it's, it's a good thing to do. Get that comment. But I'm thinking, is there something that guards us against, like Airbnb or some other commercial enterprise that's more prominent for a property? This might be, I'm allowed by the zoning. If it is allowed, it's something else. But I'm thinking single-family residential, that's not allowed.
Uh, so we're getting a little outside of the, of the application that's before us, but to be responsive to your, to your question, uh, the zoning bylaw has a table of allowed uses in residential districts. And there are certain uses that are allowed in residential districts by right, and there are certain uses that are not allowed in residential districts at all, regardless of whether or not you want to apply to this board or another board or committee to try to get, uh, a use permitted in those areas. So to answer your question, there are regulations on what can and cannot be done in, in a residential district. Uh, yes, sir. Uh, I'm sorry, sir.
What is the sworn here?
You have to be sworn in order to speak before the board today. So I, I can appreciate your, your desire to speak, but, but we, we went through it a little bit earlier. If you, if you wanna speak, you have to be sworn in. If, I swear the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Your responses, I do.
I do.
Your name and address, sir?
Ken Hale, 26 White Hall Lane.
Thank you, sir.
And I butt on the left side.
Sure.
I just have a question on what was suggested about the plot plan versus the architectural plan.
Yes.
I didn't understand how it gets resolved.
Good question. And we had started down that road with, with the applicant. So, uh, there is a discrepancy in numbers on the two documents that the, two drawings that the applicant has submitted in support of their application. The number of square, total square foot on this document differs from the number of total square foot on this document. The applicant, in response to my inquiry on that, has advised that the total square footage on this document is the correct square footage. And so then they have to go back to the engineer that drew up this document and work together with the architect that drew up this document and come up with documents that match. They will be allowed to do that, and we will reschedule this hearing for a date, I think we said March 7, for them to come back in with a drawing that matches, two drawings that match. Because, uh, presuming that in all other respects, this board is prepared to grant this application, uh, we wanna make sure that the documents are correct that support that application. Yes, sir?
Paul, wouldn't the plot plan be historically the plan? Or is it done every time? That's, that's the part I'm sort of not getting.
This is a newly, this, this is a new plot plan. This is not a, so when you buy a house, your, your bank will do a plot plan for you, and a lot of people keep those in their files. Those are, surveyor walks around the property with a tape measure for the purposes of assuring the bank that they're lending you money on a piece of property. Not technically binding in a legal proceeding. Um, so what many homeowners and applicants do is, especially in this case, where they're gonna be adding to an existing property, they've done a new plot plan that shows both the existing, uh, dimensions of the residence and a new one. So this isn't, uh, this was one that was done specifically for this application and is new, dated January 11th of 2018.
But there was some existing plot plan before? That would've been the record?
Uh, we don't know. We, we don't have it in our record. It's not, it's not part of the record for this application. All right. Um...
I think Brad was gonna ask for a continuation.
Yes. Uh, so, so, so Brad, if we're, if we're gonna, we're gonna, well, just because I don't wanna drag you out fast. On, on March 7, uh, the opening of the, of a new 40B is scheduled here. It's in this room, isn't it?
Uh.
You may wanna rethink that. But, um...
Might be changed.
It'll be, well, it'll, it'll, there's a hearing date on March 7. That's the next hearing date available to you. Uh, it's about two weeks out. Uh, what I would propose to do is have you request a continuance to that date. Uh, and we would, for a lot of reasons, have you come in and hear your case first before we open the 40B, cause I imagine all things being equal, uh, it'll be quick. Uh, and have you heard on that date. Is that okay?
I appreciate that. We'll make sure that we get the correct plan to you in advance.
Okay. Uh, the applicant's requested a continuance for, uh, March 7. Uh, we don't need a vote on.
So moved. Yeah, we should.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, yeah, we should. Yeah, we should. We should. We should.
We do.
Okay. Robert, move. John, second. All those in favor? All right. 5-0-0. We're continued to, uh, Wednesday, March 7.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. Thank you, everybody, for your time and patience. So the hearing's been continued to Wednesday, March 7, to allow them to revise the plans in conformity with their application. A new hearing date will be posted.
Question, please. Will I have questions?
The hearing is closed, sir. I'm sorry. What's that?
I think this issue has been discussed now. It's gonna be piped up on the building schedule. I'm taking it for the, um, building.
What do you mean by the?
Discrepancy.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, Kristen, just let folks know that we, we're gonna add, I mentioned it'll be really quick. Yeah, I, I, you know, unless, unless the new plan require a whole revision of the application and calculations regarding square.
Actually, you know, we could, uh, we could bring them in, um, depending on where it is. If it's here, we can go into the next room, do it, and then come back here for the, uh, 40B. If it's over at the, uh, the center, uh, I know there's a, a little empty room in there that we could do it quickly in.
Yeah, you can figure it out. I mean, like I said, I mentioned.
It's a pain in the neck for you a little bit, isn't it?
I, I just gotta come in for that.
You gotta come in for that one.
Yeah. No, I, I mean, the other, the other option was to do it at the end of March, and that's, we wanna try to get it made, try to get it quick.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll come in for 10 minutes.
Leave, leave us with the.
You'll be, you'll be paid accordingly.
Yeah, yeah. The pay doesn't go up, unfortunately.
Yeah.
All right. Good on that one. All right. Next on the agenda is a request, uh, regarding whether a modification to the Schoolhouse Commons 40B at 172 Woburn Street is major or minor, substantial or insubstantial, um, such that, uh, we can make that determination tonight for, um, for the applicant. Um, you know, the hearing on the matter's closed. The decision was issued, and they've come in, they wanna make a few changes to the project. So go ahead, Brad. Have at it.
Thank you. The chairman's here. He gave us a question. The board's in favor of insubstantial change. Uh, a letter was submitted January 24th. I want to nature the changes. Basically, uh, there's a shed at the back of the building now, and it's, uh, this plan is to extend it 11 feet, uh, the same distance to each side of the entrance way. Uh, that would allow electrical, uh, facilities to be inside the building and allow inside bicycle storage. That's the purpose of expanding that. With that, uh, is the request to, uh, move the air conditioning condenses. With that, uh, is the request to, uh, move the air conditioning condenses to be on the top of the, uh, the shed at the back. They would be shielded, uh, by a fencing, a solid fencing, either heavy vinyl or some sort of a composite material around that, uh, so the condenser would not be seen from the ground outside that area. By doing that, that also allows the transformer to be moved from the back of the site, near the dumpster area, to the side of the building, uh, which is, uh, I think from a, from a perspective, is a better way to put it. Those are the three changes being requested. The expansion of the width of the shed at the back, uh, for the recent saving, having the condensers for air conditioning be on top of it, and then moving the transformer forward on the site.
First, first question, Brad. Is the, uh, material that you said is a vinyl type, is that a sound absorbent material?
Yeah, it would be a quidvise, that's a condition, um, to have that be a bathroom. I'm, I'm not sure if the, it's a, it's a, like a concrete composite they make, uh, that was, they planned, the architect said they'd use around that.
Because by raising, by raising that onto the roof, um, you're, you're pushing it out further, uh, to the neighbors, and that, that could be a, an issue down the road.
That, that's why they, um, they proposed that, not just to visually obscure it, but also to be a, a sound bathroom device. And it could also be a requirement that the, the mowers have to be inspected and replaced periodically. Understand, that's the other part. If you don't take care of these, they can vibrate, and that can create a certain noise, so that could be a condition as well, uh, that those be inspected.
Yeah, I think we want to make sure that those, those conditions are met.
Because that would affect also the people who are living in the, uh, the building.
Exactly.
RMLD weigh in on the pad yet?
I haven't heard.
They'll want to. They want to make sure there's access, and it's where they want it, and...
Right, right. That, that may be behind this, but I can't say that, I don't know.
Right.
That, that again, it's a combination of the, of the things, I think, that make this a questionable situation. The pad, especially with, uh, Redding Light, uh, is, is going to be important, because we spent a long time, um, you were there, I mean...
Uh, well, no, Josh.
That's why Josh was there, I guess, but, uh, you knew. But I mean, we spent a lot of time on that, going back and forth, uh, and relocating that, I think is a, is a critical issue. Uh, I'd rather, I thought that tonight we would have something from Redding Municipal Lights, um, and the, uh, Engineering Department, so that we could put that to bed at the same time.
I, I don't know, I do wish you would.
Uh, any other board members have any questions to raise? Robert?
Well, the only one I, I have is, is dimension wise, I mean, you, you had the electric tran, or the transformers on an eight by eight pad previously. Now we're going to relocate those to where the condensers were before, in that cutout in the wall, I call it, the retaining wall, but yet that doesn't look like it's an eight, eight-foot niche in there that's in depth, eight foot, it looks like it's only about three or four feet, and I can't recall what that was.
It would probably have to be large to accommodate that.
Yeah, okay.
Would really have to be cut into the, cut into the...
That's, that's what I would think, it would have to cut in even more.
Yeah, I went through that.
And maybe, maybe to back to the property line even, uh, well, you...
Yeah, I went through the distance, but of course the...
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it now, you're, you're only a couple of three feet from the property line now, yeah. So that, that's, I, I would tend to agree that I would like to see, you know, we, we do see request number one here, the rear addition, eight feet by 24 feet, expanded to eight feet by 35 feet. But I don't see anything in regards to items two and three there on the plan, what, what, you know, where the new changes are, what, what the new request is, you know, where's this eight by eight pad? Maybe, maybe they don't need eight by eight anymore, I don't know, but I think that's what we need.
Well, on the, the addition, well, oh, right, so, so the addition is spelled out on the, the other two on.
Yeah, exactly.
The addition for the roof.
Is...
The rear addition, rather, the bike room.
Right, that, that shows up there, and, and then they say they're going to, well, okay, addition, even number two's taken care of, and saying they're going to relocate the condensers from the utility pad...
To the roof.
Onto the roof of the rear addition. Okay, so we know where those are going.
Right, so, yeah.
But we don't know where this electrical transformer now, they say it's going to go back to where the utility pad was into that cutout into the retaining wall.
So they're going to remove or eliminate the original concrete pad that they're going to put next to the dumpster area?
Which doesn't show up.
And, and, well, the pad's there, right next to the dumpster area in the, in the lower left-hand corner?
Well, that's the, that's the utility pad there.
Right, that's going to be, that's going to be removed.
But where was the transformer pad over here? I don't see it. Yeah, I, here's the dumpster.
It's not in the plan that we have.
No, it's not, and here's the utility pad.
So they're going, so they're going to eliminate that one in the lower left-hand corner, Robert, but there's no proposed...
No lower left.
That, where they're going to put it, is, there's not really a proposed...
Just the utility pad right here.
Well, that's the utility pad there, that's where the condensers are.
But that's not big enough to accommodate the eight by eight.
Right, right.
Right, right.
That's, but that's where I'm assuming, that's where it was going to go, that's where it says.
So...
Locate the transformer to the utility pad, built into the Westbury wall.
So our, I get, so our, our inquiry tonight is that what the applicant is asking is, is this a major or minor modification?
Right.
Uh, and so, um, well, so I, I have two thoughts on that. I don't think we have enough information to make a determination as to whether or not it's major or minor at this time.
Yeah.
Um, and rather, but, in the interest of time management, if we have to make them come back anyway, do we call it major and post a hearing and just have them come back with those items?
What do we need, what do we need from them to make that decision?
I'm just trying to make a time, time, so, so we're going to make them come back with new information this next time, because I think, Brad, you see...
What is the information?
RMLD to weigh in on the location and the size of the pad, that it's sufficient, and where's going to be...
I can look at it from a different perspective. You're being asked to determine whether or not the substance of the change, moving this there, doing this and doing that, is that a significant change to the total project? Or is it not? And I don't, I do think we need to talk about the nitty gritty details of how it's going to be done. I don't think that impacts that, the decision they're asking us to do. That's my view. And being a techie on this whole stuff, I view what they want to do here as something that's not significant to the overall project.
I disagree with you, sir, I think it is.
Well, okay, we have worked it out.
However, however, do we have a third option? Third option, I'm thinking, is, would you want to withdraw your request at this particular time to allow you to go back and get?
All right, this was just another business request, so this wasn't a, a hearing.
Yeah, it's not a hearing.
So, so, so just, I don't even think he needs to withdraw it, I think just, we're going to have him, have him come back with the same application.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, we, we don't want to get through publications, we don't have to, that's...
No, but, but I was just going through the steps, Brad, I, I don't think I want to do that either, I'm just thinking from a, a time management perspective, but I don't think that, I'm not sure that any of us agree as we sit here, based upon the information we have in front of us, uh, that, well, I, I don't know that we can make a determination as to whether or not this is major or minor. It seems to me that this is somewhat minor, presuming that RMLD agrees and, uh, we see where it is. I think we can, I, you know, it's not going to impact the turn radius, it's not going to impact, you know, we want to make sure we condition for the noise protection on the roof, uh, but those, those don't seem significant enough to, they're not large enough as to impact the, the areas that would trigger major modification, the scope, size, density, you know, it's not, that, it's, it's not, I don't think it's major. So, he's on his other, they're on his other business right now, so he's got a couple of things to go get, and then come on back in when you get them.
Uh, is it possible with, with your next meeting after your 40B, could we ask to leave you on your work agenda?
On the 21st, I believe.
Is it the 21st?
Well, the 21st is...
21st is reserved.
Reserved.
But it's going to be, we'll do that again, but right now, it's reserved, nothing is on.
Uh, well, let's think about that for a second, because from the date that the meeting opens on the 7th, you have a 15-day window to make some decisions.
Right.
And that's probably why they're holding the 21st, they're holding the 21st for that. Um, but I suppose, I said, you know, and again, uh, I suppose, given that we don't know what's going to be on the 21st, that we could determine that he can come back in on the 21st and do this, uh, or what's the next one after that? Then we're into what, middle of April? April 4th, and that's not, that hasn't been reserved for anything.
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it has.
There's two on it right now.
We have two items.
Oh, jeez, okay, geez, I didn't, I haven't been looking at the schedule, I guess. Uh, all right.
But this ties, this ties up everything in terms of moving, I'm sure that...
That's, he's poised to proceed.
No, right, I, I get it, no, I, I get it, time is, time is money, and money is time.
To bring up another point, I, I think, even though we're making a decision tonight on a substantial, insubstantial change...
We're being asked to make that decision.
Yeah. I think we have to base it on something, and we have to write up a decision on that, we have to do a writing on that, I don't know if the minutes of the meeting, I, or do they, John?
You have to write up a decision.
No, we have to, we'd have to write up the stuff that we want to make a determination...
Insubstantial or substantial, and then we have to reference it to a plan, so I think we need a plan...
Correct.
With a revised date on it, showing the changes. We see one change, but we don't see where the transformer's going.
And we, and we want to make sure that we have notification from RMLD that they're okay with that, with the, the size and location of the, uh, the new pad. And then, so, so, so then the question is, and, and I wasn't planning to be busy in March with DVD and that, but apparently, uh, with that whole 40B going on, uh, but do we want to do on the 21st what we're doing on the 7th? Have them come in and be heard first? The, the 21st is, will, the, the 21st will likely not be a substantive 40B date.
But I can...
That's the...
Don't know that, because a decision has to be made that night, by that night.
Well, and if a decision is made, it's made and it's, and the hearing is closed, I would imagine, if that's the case. Or that, or that hearing date, so you, so you'd come in and convene a hearing on that night, the 21st, make a determination regarding that 15-day deadline, or you could at the 7th say, uh, we will let you know if we're going to meet on that, within that 15-day deadline, and let that meeting pass.
Too many balls in the air right now.
Right, 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 right. So let's, let's suggest for a moment that both the 7th and the 21st are going to be substantive 40B contact. On the 7th, we have them coming in to be heard to revise the plans on the accessory apartment permit. We're hopeful, uh, that that won't take very long. And then, on the 21st, he wants to come back in to be heard under other business, uh, to satisfy the board that this is, well, to allow the board to have enough information in front of it to make a determination as to whether this is major or minor.
Right.
And the question is, for the board, uh, do we want to let them sneak, squeeze in on the 21st? Or make them come in with more?
Well, here's another issue. You've got a 40B that's sitting there, if we're doing something definitive that night on Lakeview, then, um, right after that, we're taking another 40B with a substantive or a non-substantive change, there's two 40Bs on the plate the same night.
Yeah, I know we, I, well, I mean, I know this...
One's a, I mean...
We typically don't like to schedule anything when we have a 40B on, because we want to devote that night to the public that's going to be there...
Correct.
And the issue and the developer that's there, that's, that's on the agenda.
Correct.
And so...
But typically, on a substantial or insubstantial change to a 40B, that's a shot, it should have been shot tonight, but it, it should be, it isn't a public hearing. If we decide that it's a substantial change, then it has to be advertised at a public hearing.
Right.
So it goes relatively quick, I think.
Well, right, we need enough information in front of us to, to make a simple determination as to whether this is major or minor modification. Major modification, he's got to post it, publish, and come back for a hearing.
Right.
Minor modification, we write it up that we, why we've made that decision, and he goes back to the building department and, uh, and the developer, and they work out how they need to do it.
Well, if you're going to do it for the 21st, which is not going to be a big deal, it gives you time to go back and hopefully get the information that we need for that. You can work with, um, daytime government, get the, you, I think you know what the word's after, you could give us the, you could give us the information all that time, put a package together, so it will be easy enough, I just, I just have the concern of mixing, because we have the clientele for 140B in the room, and they're not going to leave when they see you're going to have another one.
Well, this isn't posted.
This isn't posted.
I know that, that's what I'm saying. Nobody's going to be here for the, for the Woburn Street 40B, nobody's going to be, it's not posted. I mean, it's posted, it's other business, but it's not, it's not a hearing. Well, I mean, John, let, let, I, I, you know, I want to be fair to you as well, because we do, you know, we do have a lot, it's typically the board's policy that we don't put anything else on the night that we have a 40B, because we want to give that due, give it, give it its due. So I guess the other option is, is to give them April 4th.
Well, I don't, well, the question, since this is not a hearing, since you have, uh, the opportunity, uh, and the next meeting is the 7th, which is two weeks away, can we clarify this in two weeks?
Well, he said he wanted the 21st, it might take him some time.
Well, I don't know.
We, we can do it to the 7th, I thought that's what you wanted to do, to stretch it, but considering you have it for the 7th.
So you want, so...
I think what John's saying is you could advise us on the 7th how you stand on this one, whether you would be prepared on the 21st.
No, we could do it, we could do it on the 7th.
Oh, do it then. Have them both come in the 7th, and you're loading up the 7th.
Do them both, yeah, hey, if you can.
It's not going to take a lot of engineering work to cargo...
Uh, dealing with RMLD, I don't know.
But I'm talking about this plan, uh, RMD's letter, I, we can't control how soon you respond, I don't know where that is, you know, if they take a month, that's beyond our control. But would like to at least get permission to put it there. If RMD says no, it's going to stay where it is, and I'll see it's going to stay where it is. So if you could do it on the 7th, one through them, do you in advance of that?
And again, I defer to, we try to make those lights...
I know, I know, but I mean...
Light, because we try to keep the only thing on, and we've, we've made an exception for the, for the special permit, because we thought it was going to be quick.
And that will make another exception, but I have two items before the 40B that night.
And there's going to be a roomful of people waiting to hear the new 40B.
We could do the one at the beginning, and the one after we have gone through that. I know that that, I, the timing, the timing is everything.
For the first one, go home for an hour.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 you can't, because I got to be here for that. Well, well, do I, wait a minute, do I need, so if we, if we continue this for another, another hearing, it's not even a hearing, uh, do I, do I even have to be here? So if you scheduled it on, on a night that just the 40B was going to be on...
Yeah.
And you wanted to do it one before, hear the new 40B one after, and I'm only here for the first one, for the special part one, then I take off, I'm not, obviously not here.
Right. No, you, I agree with you, you just, you wouldn't vote on it, but we would have to have at least four members there voting on it.
But now that I, now that I've been part of this, part of the process, do I need to be here for that part of the process?
Well, you've got someone who's not here, who's going to be part of the process too.
Well, he'd, he'd have to, he'd have to listen to the...
I think he would.
I think it's wrong to put them both on the agenda for the East and Eaton one, same night.
I think you're right.
It's not going to happen, we think it's going to happen in five minutes, just the way it's gone tonight, it's not going to happen in five minutes.
We've already gone against, we've already gone against our working policy that we don't put anything else on it.
We'll be playing 30 minutes, we'll be holding up the rest of the whole Eaton process.
I think it's wrong. I, I say, I say continue it to the 4th, and, and, and make our lives a little bit easier, you know, it's a bit of an inconvenience.
April 4th, we just, we have two items on the agenda, and this is, this is just a other business.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it's a night that we've got other items on the agenda, I would say let's continue it to the 4th, that way we're not stressing about.
I would agree.
What's gonna go on with the 40B. Any, any other board members have any objection or concern with that, and then we'll ask Brad if he's okay with it.
Well, I, the question that I would have for Brad is, we got a 40B that's hung up now for another month, they can't do anything on the property.
Well, I don't think, not that they can't do anything, Brad, this is not holding up construction.
Uh, you can do the gunning they have to do.
I mean, there, there's all kinds of site prep.
Okay, oh, yeah.
They can keep themselves busy, this is not, let me put it to you this way, if this was holding up the construction, it would be, we could make a decision right now that this was a major modification.
Yeah.
These are, you know, these are, you know, not impacting their ability to get work done on the property, right? Look at it that way.
I would be suing them.
So, so it's not like we're holding, that's, not like we're holding them up terribly from doing anything at the site if we make them come back on April 4th. Brad, we'd like to have you come back on April 4th, can you do that?
All right.
Okay. Uh, let's have a motion, well, I don't even, no, we don't even need a motion, we don't, it's not a case, it's not, it's not a case, we don't need a motion.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see you on April 4th.
Okay.
Thank you, Brad, thanks for your patience.
Things are just becoming more and more difficult all the time.
All right, so we've got, uh, we've got a couple of sets of minutes to go, well, that should have gone over. First one is the meeting of November 11, 2017, just blows my mind, that last time we were here was November, before Thanksgiving.
Right, yeah, November 11.
Well, the 15th was last hearing, yeah.
No, uh, November 1st, November 1st.
November 1st of the minutes that we're looking at now, there's a second set of minutes from November 15th, which would indicate that was the last time we were here. I, I took a look at it, nothing, nothing jumped out at me.
Okay, this is November 1st, right?
November 1st minutes, yes, sir.
Uh, I, I did have, uh, some comments, uh, here in the second page, Kristen, uh, Kristen, middle of the page where the paragraph starts, Mr. Redfern, mentioning he had other thoughts on the matter, uh, if we could go to the third sentence, and I think it should be, Mr. Redfern stated he believes the house was built prior to existing zoning, not zoning existing. To existing zoning, you can, if you can flip that, and, uh, he says grandfatherly. And if we could get down to the next sentence where it says, and does not feel it, if we could just, instead of it, just put in, the proposed request will create a new. No, I don't like the word it all the time, it, 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 you start saying, what, what is it? So if we could just change that, uh, and if we could get down to the paragraph, about three paragraphs below that, uh, starts, paragraph starts, sigh, stated that there would be no doubt in his mind, and then it goes, Mr. Redfern commented that in his experience, tax maps are approximate, and it would be best to use the certified plot plan for reference. And I think, oh, I know, I had a question here on the third page, uh, at the end of case number 10 dash 04, Beacon Court, when we were discussing that, and then it goes on the last paragraph, a member of the public who would come to the meeting asked the board why 23 King Street was first denied. Is that a mistake, or?
No, she didn't sign in.
Oh.
And she didn't speak up at the time.
Okay.
She was asking.
She was asking whether it was denied or not, or?
She was asking why it was denied, I think it was more about the process that it had to be denied and then it come before the board.
Okay.
And then she was asking about how she could get an application.
23 King.
Was, was it earlier on the agenda? That was, that was the special permit that was granted on case 1711.
Right, and I think we granted that special permit, so it wasn't denied.
No, so, so she came in and asked why he had to come before the board, why his, his original application was denied, and I think we explained to him that the building inspector denied his application because he needed to come to the board to seek relief, and that if she had any questions, she could go, because she was thinking of doing something similar or something along those lines.
Oh, okay.
She came in at the very end, it was, it was, it was at the very end, and she was asking kind of what the procedure was, and she had something similar planned, and I had just directed her to.
Do we even need that in the minutes then? Because it's got nothing to do with Beacon Street.
Well, I, I suppose not.
In fact, I get confused, and when I read it, I'm.
No, I, I suppose it doesn't.
But, okay, I, I just brought it up, it, it is, David, it falls under basically what you were saying, so I think it's your decision how you wanna handle it.
I, I don't, I mean, I don't care that it's there.
Okay.
Uh, but maybe we oughta set it off out of the Beacon Court, I mean, maybe just put, you know, miscellaneous or something above it, break it off and just put miscellaneous.
Yeah, miscellaneous question from the public.
Yeah, how about that, miscellaneous public inquiry.
Yeah.
How about that? That way it's set off and may not.
Yeah, because it did, I read, well.
No, I, yeah, no, and again, no.
And then I'm going back, I said, well, we approved King Street.
No, yeah, she was, she wanted to, she wanted to do something different.
Something similar to King Street.
Something similar, and.
How did she go about it?
How did, how could she go about doing it, and why did he get denied, and why did he have to come here, and?
That's what, why he gets denied a building, and he had to come to before the board.
Yeah, I think, you know, the process, and you should go talk to the building department, blah, blah, I think that was.
Yep.
Tried to give her a quick and easy answer. All right, any other questions, comments about those minutes?
Do, I'm off.
Everybody okay with them?
Yep.
All right, we'll take a motion for the November 1st minutes as amended.
So moved to accept the minutes of November 1st, 2017 as amended this evening.
Second?
Second.
Robert, all those in favor? Five zero zero. Robert, on to the minutes of November 15th.
Okay. And again, I printed these out and went through them today, and I had a couple of comments in here, more grammatical than anything on them. First page, uh, case number 1712, third paragraph, second sentence, creating outdoor space for their four-year-old son, that is nonverbal, I, I think we should put who in there instead of that, yeah, it's, it is a person, so who. And then I notice in, it's just a spelling error on this aquifer in a number of areas.
Yeah, you, you used the kids' aquifer, or the moisturizer lotion, aquifer.
A Q U I F E R.
It's an I F E R.
A Q U I F E R.
It, it's, you know.
A, A, wait a minute.
Yeah.
A C Q U I F E R.
No, go, index of your zoning bylaws has, has it, it's Aqua Ford Protection District, you can get it from that.
However it's spelled in the bylaw.
Yeah, however it's spelled in the bylaw. We have that, and I think that.
A Q.
That happened there, I had it in three places, so we can catch that.
So just go, yeah, go back through and spell check it.
And I think that was it, pretty much.
I actually, while I was just looking at these, found one, on page two, uh, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph down, spell out his last name, it says Mr. K.
Mr. K.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I was just looking through this, I just wanna. All right, so in the vote section on page three, we have granting a variance and then withdrawal of a variance for the same case. In the withdrawal, the paragraph before it explains what, that, what the conversation was with regard, he withdrew his variance with regard to exceeding a lot coverage in the Aqua Ford Protection area.
Right.
So is, is that vote clear enough that that's what we were, he was withdrawing?
Granted withdrawal for a variance, yeah.
Okay, all right, good, I'm good then, I have nothing further. All right, anybody else have any questions on the minutes? Motion to approve as, do we amend them at all? As amended, November 15th.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of November 15th, 2017 as amended.
Second?
Second.
Hi, Si, any discussion, discussion? No, all those in favor? Five zero zero. All right, uh, we don't have anything else on the agenda tonight, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Hi, Si, you have a second?
Second.
Second by Nick, all those in favor? Five zero zero, we are adjourned, thanks everybody.